Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Philip McCorkle. I'm here on behalf of the owners and then the potential developer of the property. I have Chad Zitrow, our engineer, here with us. Steve Brock, Chris Hay, representing the developers are here as well. I won't be long-winded, I'll be fairly brief. There are several issues normally with a rezoning application. The first one is traffic, particularly because twenty-one's involved. But before I get to that, let me just show you the site plan and then remove some of these other exhibits. And you'll just try to remember that. We just rezoned this property about six months ago, four months, four or six months ago. That's phase one. This is the property in question today. This would contain in the dark green lines like that. The property, we use the same exit across from Rice Hope. As we discussed a few months ago, and the city council approved a few months ago. There's going to be traffic on twenty-one, there's going to be more traffic on twenty-one. Of course, it's expanding. Effingham County just approved a rezoning for eight million square feet of warehousing. And the traffic will come right down to twenty-one. You might as well just, we've got to get some improvements from the DOT. They've got a six-lane twenty-one, and I think they'll get that done in not too distant future. But whether it's a warehouse or in Port Wentworth or in Effingham County, they're going to be coming down Highway twenty-one. Port Wentworth might as well reap some of the benefits in the form of tax dollars and jobs. The taxes generated on a yearly basis by this development will be over seven hundred thousand dollars, as our development impact assessment pointed out. Again, the entrance that runs across from Rice Hope, it's going to require multiple lanes as designed by Kimly Horn, a renowned traffic expert. The city's consulting engineer has reviewed the traffic study, which is quite extensive, and has approved it with the recommendation that the improvement suggested by Kimly Horn be implemented as the development occurs. And of course, we're going to do that. With regard to noise, we've had also satisfied requirements of ordinance. The answer will know that we're doing the right kind of job protecting our neighbors from some noise. We had an extensive traffic, excuse me, noise study from Terricon. And the noise requirements are pretty onerous in Port Wentworth. You can only have fifty-five decibels of sound at the property line of the receiving property, which is a person who might live nearby. And I'm talking above fifty-five right now. If you're sitting at home talking to your wife in the living room, that's sixty. If your refrigerator's humming, that's fifty. So somewhere between humming your refrigerator and a normal conversation is fifty-five decibels. So if you could bring your sound down to fifty-five decibels, you won't hear it. That's what we're required to do by the city's ordinance. In this case, Terricon, because of a combination of distance and some extensive hundred-foot wide buffers upon which will be planted, excuse me, build a fifteen-foot-high berm, just like we did behind LA Crossgate Development, when that's developed on Crossgate Road. And that's become kind of a gold standard for berms. It's hundred-foot wide buffer, fifteen-foot-high berm with plantings on the top trees. It helps also absorb sound. And all these green areas are berms designed to ameliorate the sound that might be coming from the different buildings. Here, behind the Georgia Power Station, that anybody who's ridden down Sausage Road has seen that. There'll be those extensive berms and the hundred-foot buffer. That plus the distance, the closest neighbor we would have to development would be twelve hundred feet. And all the neighbors on the other side of the street, the distance would be fifteen hundred feet from the nearest house to the edge of our property. So of that fifteen hundred feet, about half of it's wooded, which is going to stay wooded for as wet as it can be and can't be really used. And then, so the distance and the trees and the berms allow us to keep the sound at fifty-five decibels, which is what we're required to do this line here, it's fifty-five decibel line. So as you can see, all around our property up here is where almost the Sausage Road development is or community is, fifty-five is within our property boundaries. Only place where it leaks out a little bit is the Georgia Power easement or switching station, but that's not residential property, so it's not required to be at fifty-five decibels there. So everywhere else is protected. And again, that has been reviewed by Port Wentworth's consulting engineer and has approved the findings and the sound study. I'll point out that we have a clear letter from the consulting engineer on our development impact assessment for all issues. So we're, that's always a question, have you gotten, as the engineer said, everything's okay? And in this case, I think Mr. Harvey would confirm that the engineer has in fact done so. The next issue is drainage. I don't have actually a exhibit regarding drainage, but there's, as with all developments in the modern era, in the last twenty, thirty years, we're required to handle all the water generated of our site, all our pavings and buildings. And so we'll have extensive ponds connected to one another, and which will eventually outfall into Black Creek. So we'll have our own drainage. Our contours showed, or a topographic survey showed that there are, one, maybe two ditches that traverse our property. And our intent is to relocate those ditches. We're not going to fill them up and backwater up on anybody else's property. I don't think those ditches function very well at present time.
They do.
And we're going to, we're going to relocate those and approve them, which would be an improvement not only for our development, but for the community on Sausage Road. And we will, we will have studies as it moves to the specific development plan studies that will, which will show that. The final issue that comes up is appearance. The, this would be grade A, class number one warehousing facilities. And frankly, most of what's being built in Savannah now is, looks pretty good. And these will also look great. That's how the design for the building. And then the entrance of the buildings, which will barely be seen, it won't be seen for twenty-one. Folks on Sausage Road, in the Sausage Road community are twelve to fifteen hundred feet from our closest property line.
I want to note an objection to that. He cannot say that. And I'm Loray Benton, this is a public, I just want to note my objection to that last statement, because my parents' property is right next to building twelve.
It's less than twelve hundred.
It's less than fifteen hundred feet.
Sir, you could talk for three minutes after this.
All right, so I would stay by my statement. For the Benton's house, the edge of the property is fifteen hundred feet away.
It's not.
The, and then you've got the berm and the plantings on top of that. So a line of sight analysis would show you even the folks on Sausage Road will only see maybe the top of the buildings, if anything. So all of those beautiful buildings won't really be seen by anybody. The entrance itself will be something that the city can be proud of. It's, I don't know of any entrance to a commercial warehouse development that would be as good-looking as, certainly that's better-looking. So as people come down twenty-one, they'll see this very nice entrance across the street from the entrance to the Rice Hope Commercial Area. And once again, remember that what our traffic light was, of course, will have to be approved by the DOT, but we have no doubt that it will be, because it's needed now. It'll be much safer for folks in Rice Hope, which was confirmed by the representative from the Rice Hope community at the city council with phase one was approved. Now, I'm going to go ahead and do a little preemptive discussion here, because we're only approving a general site plan with the zoning, not a specific plan. This will require hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of engineering studies and information. The only thing you have to put on a general plan is a compass reference, a vicinity map, locate the streets, drive, ingress and egress, topographic survey, which we provided, solar classifications, which we provided, location of stormwater detention facilities, which the plan shows, where the buildings and park are going to be, which the plan shows, and a proposed noise reduction measures, which we've discussed already. So we have met the requirements of the ordinance, has been agreed with by the city's consulting engineer. There have been emails sent to various people in the city, objecting that we haven't done a thorough site assessment, hydrology report, a geotechnical report. We don't have our DOT permits yet, we haven't got our wetland permits yet, and we haven't initiated or filed a stormwater management plan. Well, those things all come after the rezoning. If you're successful with the rezoning, you spend your money and do all those types of reports and studies and provide that information. And you can't build anything until you've done all that. It's approved by engineers, make sure that the property does drain properly, it will hold up the buildings, you got your DOT permits, all those things. So all that is to come, but it's not now. This is just, just a general site plan, preliminary general site plan is what the ordinance says. And that's what we're asking for, approval of a preliminary general site plan and the rezoning. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What type of warehouses?
Well, it's impossible to know. Same types you see all over the city, mostly warehouse distribution, what you have in town. Like Home Depot, no, we don't have any idea what the exact industries would be.
So then we also wouldn't, or do you know how many employees it would be seeing?
We estimate four to eight hundred. Some warehouses have very few, some have four, so four to eight hundred.
Would you explain about Sausage Road? I'm concerned about the rest of Sausage Road. It's, I believe it's the Durst Road.
No.
It's Park.
What's going to happen there? What, where's the entrance to this plan?
The same place phase one was, which is across Rice Hope. There's no, there's no, there's no entrance here off of twenty-one.
The general situation affects people across the road.
No, as a matter of fact, we'll have a berm, a hundred-foot buffer with a fifteen-foot-high berm by the Georgia Power Switching Station. I know that's not the right term for it, but whatever the Georgia Power facility is. So nobody could go across that to get, you know, beyond Georgia Power.
I think we call it a substation.
Substation, that's the word, so thank you. Anybody else?
Any other questions from the panel? We'll open this for a further discussion. Each person will have three minutes if you want to come up and speak. State your name, your full address, in about three minutes.
Okay, I need to use the display. So I know the last time I was here, y'all had a computer operating, so.
We won't cover this again, just three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Do you have a HMI?
Yep.
And do you need audio or just show?
Okay.
All right, well, you're good to go.
Yeah, 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 okay. Are you able to see on your side?
Yeah.
All right, I start my time now. For the record, Loray Benton, the son of Leroy in Georgia Benton, one thirty-five Sausage Road here in Port Wentworth, Georgia. So just a quick overview. What the applicant didn't, didn't touch on is some of the actual federal and state regulations that this particular property is under and that they actually have to meet. One in particular deals with the fourth and fifteenth amendment of the US Constitution, which specifically says in part that nor shall property be taken for public use without just compensation. Now, with that, the Georgia law, in terms of the Constitution, also echoes that. It says that no person shall be deprived of livelihood or property except due process of law. Now, as part of that, right, in terms of due process of law, right, it's actually incumbent upon not only everyone within the city of Port Wentworth, but you as the council here, to ensure that all laws, both federal, state, and local laws, are actually protected in terms of protecting the residents, not the developer, but the residents. Right? So that's both in the US Constitution and in the Georgia Constitution, right? Specifically, right, in paragraph two, and stating for the record, this is actually from Georgia Code, Constitution, Article One, Section One, Paragraph Three, that says that protection to person and property is the predominant duty of government, and it shall be impartial and complete, right? So in everything that y'all doing, y'all are supposed to make sure that everything that's being done, even new developments, protect the residents, not the actual developers, right? So with that being, with that being said, all of you actually have fiduciary duty to actually, a legislative fiduciary duty to protect our best interest, but in particular, property owners, right? So what that means is that in this particular, in this particular development, all right, going down to the Federal Clean Water Act. So this development actually violates the Federal Clean Water Act, because he just stated that he plans to relocate and or remove the actual canals and or waterways that are actually already there, right? Which is actually a violation of both federal law under the Clean Water Act, all right? And also, in particular, when you go down to our very own President Jimmy Carter in nineteen seventy-seven, signed various executive orders for wetlands management. In particular, it's a floodplain management, and also in terms of government actions, in terms of telling everyone, in terms of the government, that you actually have the authority to actually enforce all of these, right? The applicant has not addressed how any of the wetlands are going to be affected. He didn't address, he briefed over anything dealing with the actual, the actual drainage of the property. And so in particular, Sausage Canal is considered a natural area, right? A natural area under Georgia Code, Section Twelve, Three, Ninety-two. And so with that, again, this all falls under not only the Clean Water Act, but the Georgia National Areas Act. So approving this development would be violating all of those, all of those acts, both federal and state. So now, let's go down to just specifically, again, Georgia state state law, right? Georgia Code, Section Twelve, Five, Twenty-one, Water Resources and Declaration. To achieve this end, the government and the state shall assume responsibility for all quality of such water, water resources, and/or approving this particular development. So if you approve this, this development, and now in the future, there is any, there is any claims for fault, you are actually liable, in terms of the city of Port Wentworth, right? And in particular, because I want to get down to my, to my formal presentation, all right, in terms of civil suing legislation. So this code of thirty-three US Code, Section Thirteen, Sixty-five, this is directly related to the Clean Water Act.
Sir, I'm going to give you one more minute.
Gives, gives all of us the actual opportunity to actually, to actually sue you for any violation. So here is actually flow of the Sausage Canal. If you look at the flow of the Sausage Canal, it actually goes down towards Effingham County. That's the original flow, right? Now, why that, why that is important, because all the wetlands in that area feeds into the Upper Feridian Aqua Fire, which the wetlands actually filtrates the water that sits there that actually affects our drinking water. Because according to your water quantity report that you just released in June twenty-twenty-one, that's where the city of Port Wentworth actually gets your water from. So if you remove the wetlands, which they are proposing to do, right, it's going to directly affect the Upper Feridian Aqua Fire, which is actually property of the US government. Now, in this particular picture, this is all of their, this is all of their buildings. The blue lines are actually indicate where all of the water is going to flow into in terms of flooding out both Sausage Road and Bear Road if all of this is built. Because you have to look at the actual displacement, because if they build all of these buildings, you gotta build, you actually gotta build, build down, dig down about twenty to thirty feet, technically lay the foundation. So again, where is all that water going to displace, right? It's going, it's going to displace back into the actual community. And so now, the communities along both Sausage Road and Bear Road are going to become the new wetland areas and new floodplains, which is again, affecting property, right, which is again, makes you liable for, for, for loss. So again, them actually putting this, got you, thirty seconds. So again, with them actually putting all these buildings, their buildings here for both phase one and phase two, right, is actually going to have a negative effect on all of the property owners, both on Sausage Road and on Bear Road. And in particular, this building here, Section Twelve, my parents' house is right here, right? So it's less than the fifteen, the fifteen hundred, hundred feet that he actually, that's what he's actually stating. And again, Sausage, Sausage, the Sausage Canal flows all the way through here. So if you actually remove the Sausage Canal and prevent it from flowing back down into Black Creek, where is all that water going to back up at? All right, and again, it's a federal violation for him to even think he can actually remove that canal, because it's actual natural resources owned by the US government, not the state of Georgia and not the city of Port Wentworth. That's my, that's my rebuttal.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My name is Claudia Brown, and I live on Marion Road.
What's your address?
One fifty, Marion Road. I wasn't intending to speak, but I will piggyback off of what he's saying about the wetlands, and I agree. I also want to address the traffic problem that we have. There was a good question asked, how many employees would be at these warehouses? If we get to that point, eight hundred. We already have Effingham coming through. We have people that are coming this way to go to work, eight hundred of them, more, if you build these warehouses. We have Interstate ninety-five, where you got travelers getting off the interstate to come and do business or visit. So we have all this traffic. In the morning time, when I'm trying to get to work, I already have a hard time getting out. So imagine we're going to multiply that with trucks, the pollution, more cars, people coming in. So my thing is, is why there? All the places that it could be built, because Port Wentworth is vast. Why there? Why would you build it around my neighborhood where I grew up? Why would you build it around other people's neighborhood where they grew up? I mean, there's plenty of land around here. It may not be the most prime property, because it's not off ninety-five, or it's not coming directly on twenty-one or thirty, but there is property here that could be considered for such a vast undertaking, distribution. And then, I'm not, I don't want to get off subject, but we do have another, I'm hearing about another warehouse that may be popping up around here, too. So we're going to be bombarded with warehouses in neighborhoods, in a neighborhood where people live. And as far as the noise, it's, I think the noise variable, the decibels or whatever you're saying, fifty-five decibels, it's twenty-four-seven. You've got activity going on in your neighborhood. You've got people driving in and out around your neighborhood, you see? And I'll object, and I just want it on record. Thank you.
My name is LaShawn Benton, I'm at one thirty-five Sausage Road. And my issue is to, one, building these warehouses, again, like piggyback to what both Mr. Benton and what this lady just said, one, it's unnecessary. It's going to depreciate the values of the homes, it's unsafe. I have kids, okay? Everybody in, on Sausage Road have kids as well, grandkids, okay? And I feel that this, whatever this, that they're building, is unsafe for us. And as far as building these warehouses on top of what they call wetlands, that means it's going to push everybody in Sausage Road eventually out. It's going to flood everybody out. And what are we supposed to do? Are we supposed to just up and just leave within a year or two after they build these warehouses? Where are we going to relocate? Anybody going to give us any money for this, for this, for relocating? The residents in, on Sausage Road and Pine Bear Road, they are elderly. They don't work, they retire. So it's unfair to them to have these warehouses come into their neighborhood, our neighborhood, and then what? We just got to just accept this? And they just supposed to uproot and just, and just uproot to somewhere else? It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the community. It's like she said, it's millions of the square footage y'all can, they can go. Why Port Wentworth, why in a black neighborhood? It seems as though that they, that this is intentionally being put there to eventually flood out the black community.
Yep, over time.
And like I said, I'm not no engineer, but, but to me, with these warehouses, we're not going to have anywhere to live. We already have issues right now that Port Wentworth is not keeping the canals clean. All the canals function properly. I've stayed in Sausage Road since nineteen eighty-five. We used to be able to hear the ditches, hear the water go down to the canal. Now everything is quote-unquote backed up, apparently, when it was never that done before. So it seems like it's intentionally not being kept to flood out the community. And for y'all to think about to even approve some warehouses in a residential neighborhood. Now, all of you stay in residential neighborhoods, would you, any of you want any warehouses in your neighborhood that you can look down the road and see? It's unfair. Now, what the gentleman said about the power plant from where I stay on one thirty-five Sausage Road is less than a mile. I can look down there and see it. Now, nobody wants to see any canals or any, I mean, any warehouses in there, in their neighborhood, period. Over a dollar? And I think when y'all make this judgment, y'all should be considering the residents in the community, not just for whatever, it's whatever amount of money is going to make the city. Find somewhere else to build it and leave us alone on Sausage Road, Pine Bear Road, and Monty. I'm good, thank you.
JP Robinson, two-two-five Ran Road. As I listened to all of us and everyone has spoken about it, my concerns is that we're going to be another Greens Road. And not only Greens Road, guess what's going to happen? Our taxes going to go up. Because if you change the zoning now, what prevent you from going up on the taxes? Could that be preventable? Plus, you fixing to build something right in front of Sausage Road where we, some apartment houses, I believe it is, or gated community, fix to build one right there. Here again, once you put it in there, then the taxes go up. Taxes will not go up. You assure them, okay? All right? The value of our property will go down. Can you assure them?
It's already going down.
It's already going down.
I haven't got my statement yet, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it has.
About ten thousand dollars, Sausage Road.
Ten thousand dollars?
Yep, yep, yep. That's a value of my mind.
So therefore, we've seen the after effects of it right now.
And it's not even here yet.
Like the young lady said, for, I'm not against progress, but let us have a part of it. I mean, you know, if, if it's going to come to that, which we would look like it's going to be, but we want it on record that, you know, all those things are being said. but we want it on record that, you know, all those things are being said. And the gentleman did a good presentation. I don't know nothing about laws and rules and everything, but having that, it looked like it was pretty well documented. Thank you.